You're gonna tell Hesse, you said?
This could get going, and then once I did, they started playing.
If you need me to tweak it down, just look at me and I'll up there.
She, uh, and she was, the surprise how...
I used it, Bill. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome each one of you here this afternoon, this morning. If you would, we appreciate you silencing your cell phones or either turning them off. If you would, just please stand for the invocation and pledge.
To heaven's father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather this morning and to conduct the business of the great people of Walton County. We ask you for strength, we ask you for guidance, and we ask that you give us the understanding so that we can make the right decisions for our people. We pray for all those that are present today and their families, may you bless them in a special way, and those also that serve us, not only here, our firemen, our medics, our police, Sheriff's Department, but those that serve us overseas, so that we may have a free country. And all these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, we have some, two additions and one deletion for the agenda. First addition would be to extend the local state of emergency resolution due to the rain event, and the second one would be under Public Works. Jason Coon with the Juvenile Justice has requested some assistance in hauling some material. We have one deletion, be under Public Works, the recycling pilot project.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the addition and deletion.
Second. Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Are they consented?
Approved.
Agenda first.
Yeah. Now, motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item is consent agenda, need approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the first item is under Public Works. We have three firms, engineering firms, that will each present a five-minute presentation for your review and selection of which firm will get the CR2 paved shoulder project, Phase Three. And we have a map of that Phase Three, as you can see on the screen there. It's the red section.
The red section.
If you're ready for the presentations, first up will be Genesis.
Good morning. I'm Bill Kleppich with Genesis. I'm a senior project engineer, and with me today, we have Mike Graham, who's our contract support specialist, Doug Pritchard, our project administrator, and Sean Moore, our senior inspector. We've reviewed the plans for this project, the County Road Two, Phase Three. We understand it's certainly a seven-mile shoulder widening project that begins at County Road 83 and extends east to the county line. We are very familiar with this type work, this type work with the shoulder widening, which will be a plus or minus four-and-a-half-foot wide paved shoulder and one-and-a-half-foot earthwork shoulder. It's very similar in scope to work we've already completed for the Department of Transportation on County Road 1087, which was an aura and design build project that we performed for the Department of Transportation. We completed that project back in April. Again, this is very similar in scope, particularly with relate, as it relates to the 1087 project, where north of the Shoal River, we could not do any milling because there was not sufficient thickness of pavement. We have the same type situation here on County Road Two. Our firm has been performing and providing construction, engineering, inspection services since 1994, and we certainly feel we have the qualifications needed and the experience, the proven experience to deliver a quality product for the county. We believe in strictly adhering to the project plans and specifications, and we believe in holding the contractor responsible for the work that he does, to make sure he does it in accordance with those plans and specs, and certainly that the contractor performs his work in a timely manner. We work with the contractor in a partnering method to get the project moving and keep it on track, and certainly do everything within our, within our purview to keep the project within its established budget. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you. We had outlined our experience certainly in our statement of qualifications. We feel we are well-qualified, and the team here standing before you, we are the people that would be working on this County Road Two, Phase Three project. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to come before the commission, and we certainly would appreciate your consideration in awarding us this project. Thank you very much.
Who would be the project manager? Who would be?
I'm the senior project engineer, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you'd be the project manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up will be HDR.
Good morning. My name's Ed Hughdek, and I'll be the senior project engineer for HDR. The team of HDR and Preble Risch. Preble Risch is our subconsultants. I would first like to thank the board for the opportunity to be here this morning and try to explain why we would be the best selected team for the project. Two and a half years ago, Ralph Risch and I stood here before you, except it was at the south end of the county, and we were looking for your confidence when we were getting ready to provide oversight on the US 331 four-lane project from Owl's Head to Nokusi Plantation. We were fortunate enough to be selected by you. We got that job, and I think we gave, we gave the board and the citizens of Walton County an excellent project. That job finished on time, under budget. It was a lap project, like this is a lap project, we know how to handle that, and we had no construction issues. So as this county phase, this County Road Two, Phase Three project kicks off, what I've done is put together the same team individuals. I'll lead it, just like I led the Owl's Head project, Preble Risch inspectors and my administrators. It's a lap project, just like that was. We know how to do lap projects. We've done very similar shoulder widening jobs. County Road 173 is going on right now, from Bonneville all the way to the Alabama State Line. So we're familiar with this kind of work. That's 7.07 miles of work is shoulder widening, a lot of driveways, the grocery store to deal with, are some issues on that job that you have to be on top of, and we want to give the citizens of Walton County another fine project similar to that Owl's Head project. That's what I have for you.
Any questions? Thank you.
The third firm up will be Preble Risch.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning to present before you for Phase Three on County Road Two. We're extremely familiar with the project. We currently are set up onsite at County Road 83, a little bit west of County Road 83 with our construction trailer, and APAC started construction on Phase One and Two last week. We had our pre-construction conference with DOT and the contractor and all the subcontractors on the project, and their issue, that we've issued their notice to proceed, so they're blowing and going on Phase One and Two. Phase Three is about a seven-mile stretch that goes to the east from County Road 83 all the way to the Holmes County Line. We've reviewed the plans, and we're very familiar with the plans. They're very similar to Phase One and Two. There's not a lot of big differences. We expect that the contractors bidding on the project will likely be the same group that bid on Phase One and Phase Two, and we're familiar with all of those contractors and have worked with all of them before. I just wanted to give you one example of a, of a project where we've made some tremendous value and equity for the county. An example of where our abilities have really excelled to help the county is on County Road 30A, your aura project that we handled on County Road 30A. It's been a couple of years ago, but initially, the contractor was going to build about two miles on County Road 30A from Highway 98, headed back to the east, and through some savings that we found on the job by shifting a little bit of the, by shifting the center line of the road, we were able to save quite a bit of money and able to extend the project about another mile to get it all the way to County Road 393. We've done work in the county since 1996. We're very familiar with how the county operates and would make it a priority to make sure that the community of Darlington, up in that area, are all familiar with what's going on with the project, when milestones are going to happen, such as lane closures, and also to make sure they're briefed on any delays or issues that would affect their access to their properties. So that's all that I was going to say today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I really feel like we're probably the most qualified to be able to handle this project for you.
Cliff, I only have one question. The gentleman before with HDR was going to use y'all as consultants, and then y'all are bidding as well. You don't see a conflict there, or there's no?
No, ma'am. We've, we've worked with them before, and I think, I think what he was referring to is that if he got the job, that we would provide some additional inspectors as needed, and if we got the job, that we would, he would provide a contract support specialist to us as needed, so.
Actually, yeah, actually, their proposal says that they're going to use, let's see, HDR's proposal says they're going to use five, they have five Preble Risch bios in their proposal, and Preble Risch has three HDR bios in their proposal. So, yeah, it seemed to me as well that, that they're kind of all the same firm, and they were, they were submitting twice, but they're, it's actually kind of the same team. That's, that was an observation I made as well. So...
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Any, any thanks, Ed, clear?
No, sir. I would just say that, you know, that the team we're providing is a well-rounded team with tons of DOT experience, and everybody that we turned in with our proposal is more than qualified to handle the project.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, did you have a question? I just have a question that, that, let's see, how do I put this? Do you, do you agree that vendors should not take county staff, people on trips, give them gifts, take them to football games and such?
I do.
Okay, and you, you've never done that before?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if you would score those and pass them down to clerk of courts, and we could...
I think I added wrong on one of them.
We could move on to the next item whenever you're ready.
Thirty, thirty. I let Alex add it. Alex, I think I added wrong.
Hey, you want to make a count?
Put your plea, yeah. I don't have a calculator in front of me. I couldn't take the shoes off, so.
Next item, we have Mr. Stafford with Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Demir. Good morning, commissioners, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to request the board to authorize public work to perform. The scope of work is specified through drainage improvements associated with County Road 183 South and the Russian property, and this is just making a correction, commissioners, to work that was previously done a few years back.
Any questions?
No, there's no matter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Mr. Chairman, the next item, county attorney would like to make a comment on that landscape improvement.
I'm going to ask the commission to allow us to extend the current contract for 60 days, to let me go back with Glendale and review these, these bids and the bid selection process, just to make, I've had some questions asked, and I just want to make sure I can answer those questions before we award the bid, and Glendale unfortunately is, well, not unfortunately, she's at a, at a conference this week, and so we were not able to do that. So with the board's permission, just extend the current contract and then allow me to make sure I understand all the questions and have all the answers.
You know, when you bring it back to us, because this seems to have been on and off and on and off and on and off.
I, I hope the next meeting, frankly. I shouldn't take more than two weeks.
All right, thank you, sir. Motion to extend the contract for 60 days?
The current contract.
Current, current contract for 60 days.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next item is Mr. Larry Jones, special projects coordinator on the condominium solid waste issue.
Mr. Demir's, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good to be with you today. First, I want to say thank you for allowing me to work on this project. Presented to you, and I apologize that we didn't have the, all the data together when we submitted for the agenda packet, but we do have the information that we've presented to you, prepared to go up on the, on the video monitor. The first page, and I've provided each of you with some documentation there, on the first page says fact sheet. The first thing I want to do is to go through and kind of generate some data that we can move forward from. So what you, what we found on the sheet is documented there, that according to the United States Department of Environmental Protection Agency, the United, in the U.S., the average individual waste generation is 4.4 pounds per day per person. According to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, that number in Walton County is 10.5, five pounds per day per person. According to the 2010 census, the average size of a household in Walton County is 2.38 people. According to numerous sources, the average weight of uncompacted municipal solid waste or garbage is 225 pounds per cubic yard. The current rate for commercial and condominiums are considered commercials currently in Walton County per our franchise agreement with Waste Management is $4.34 per cubic yard per month. The current rate for residential collection in South Walton, again, per, per the Waste Management franchise agreement, is $11.93 per household per month. There's an additional attachment there that shows you the composition of a, of the solid waste collection in Walton County. And Rick, you'll scroll through that. There's just documentation there supporting each of those facts. If you move back to, past that documentation, you'll see in your package what I'm calling scenario number one. We began this process to determine what, what the appropriate rate would be if the board so chose to pay for all or a part of the solid waste collection for condominium units. So if you're there at that page, scrolling up a little bit, Rick.
Okay.
One more, come on, a little bit more. Go the other way. Okay, there. All right, so in scenario number one, we took the fact that the U.S. EPA says 4.4 pounds is an average of solid waste per day per person, and 10.55 in Walton County per person, per day, and then we use the composition chart, which says this is what solid waste in Walton County looks like, and it was provided by the Department of Environmental Protection. And if you look at those, CND waste, yard waste, tires, white goods, metals, are typically, we would think, not found in a, the condominium waste mix. So those components make up 34.1% of an average yard of garbage in Walton County. So if you use the inverse of that, or 65.9%, and calculate back from the 10.55 pounds in Walton County and the 4.4 pounds as a U.S. average, and, and use the other numbers to, to generate a figure, and make an assumption that in Walton County, the condominium is treated as a single-family dwelling will average waste somewhere between the 48.3, which would be the U.S. average, and the 115.8, which would be the Walton County average, comes out to about 82.05 pounds of municipal solid waste per unit per week. If you calculate that into the average 225 pounds for a cubic yard, it generates a number of .365 cubic yards per week per condominium unit. If you apply the current rate of $4.34 per cubic yard per month to that .365 rate, it generates a rate of $6.86 per condominium, residential condominium unit per month. That was a lot of numbers, but if, if you follow that sequence, you can see how we come to that number. The next scenario on the next sheet I was asked to calculate is just a, what I'm calling it, just the raw numbers. If you consider 10.55 pounds of solid waste, waste per person per day in Walton County, and extrapolate that number through the same process using 2.38 members of a household, calculate the numbers, pounds per day, the pounds per week, divide it by the 225 to come up with the cubic yards, and you'll end up with 3.38 cubic yards per month per household, which generates a rate of $14.67. So there's somewhat two ends of the spectrum. One, you make some assumptions and calculate some numbers in, which is certainly defendable. The other is just the raw numbers as presented. So if, if this board is inclined to move this initiative forward, and staff does not rec, does not have a recommendation of whether you do or don't, but if you do, we would recommend that that rate be not less than $6.86 per residential condominium unit, but not more than $11.93 per month per residential condominium unit, which is the same rate of a single-family dwelling in South Walton. And if you, if you want to, if you decide to move that forward, I have some other recommendations that I would like for you to consider in that process.
Mr. Jones, what would be the annual cost under the, the two options?
Under the, the lower option of the 686, between $900,000 and $1 million, and the upper option, between 1.5 and 1.6 million. And I will tell you that we're still working on getting the exact number of units. We're somewhere in the 11,000 unit. It may be a few more, maybe a few less, but there's a number of things that we're working through to get there. I apologize, we don't have the exact number today, but we wanted to get this before you, that if you want to move it into the budget process, you'd have the opportunity to do that. But we're looking somewhere between roughly a million to a million six.
Would, would this start with the new fiscal year on October 1st?
I would suggest we start it, if you move forward, January 1st of 2014, to give us time to get all the details in place. We would have to renegotiate and amend the agreement, the current franchise agreement, but I don't believe we could get that done between now and October 1st. So we would ask for January 1st, 2014. If we got it done sooner, we'd bring it back to the board.
Would we look to also provide them with the annual cost of living increase that the current franchise agreement calls for?
I would, I would say yes, but that's certainly something we could work on in negotiation.
Yeah, and Mr. Jones, and where would this funding come from?
I would suggest the first year that it, it be funded through the solid waste reserves. We currently have about 3.4 million dollars in that account, and in subsequent years, and you'll see in my, in the other components in my presentation, that we're looking for means and ways of recouping some of those funds.
Okay, so that, but there is, there is money there in the account that could be, it could start January 1st, 2014, and there is money there in the count, and we expect that to be replaced by more money in the next budget year. Okay?
Wow. This is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate what Mr. Jones has done, and I think it's got a lot of merit. Do we not have an issue with regards to, to two things? Number one, doesn't the Land Development Code define condo as commercial, and we, do we need to change that?
I don't think the Land Development Code defines...
To answer part of that question, Land Development does, code does say they are commercial in nature.
Okay, so will we need to change that because the, the way that the ordinance is for paying for?
Wayne, you got a, you got a comment, Wayne?
Commissioner, I'd be a little hesitant to, to use terms from the Land Development Code for something else. Typically, those terms are just used for the internal workings of the Land Development Code. There may be other conflicts that you may have, but typically, the terms that are defined within that code apply to within that code unless the commission chooses to do that otherwise. But, but you're right, it does, it does define some as, as commercial.
Will it have any impact on this? Okay.
No, sir, I don't.
Second question is this, the current arrangement we have with the three cities in the county?
Yes, sir.
Is after the costs are calculated, the leftover money is distributed with those three cities and some with the county. As it would stand without modification, that would reduce their share. So is there a way we could incorporate saying that, that this cost, assuming, let's say the board votes to, to approve something, that this cost would be subtracted after the calculation, so that the cities would not be negatively impacted?
I would, I would agree that would be the appropriate way to approach it, that it would be out of the county's portion after that distribution.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt his, his recommendation, his option number one, at $6.86 per, per condo unit to start January 1st, and that the cost calculation for this not impact the calculations for the distributions to the three cities. Is that complex enough?
Can I make one request of your motion, that it, that it include residential condominium units only?
Okay, residential condominium units only.
Okay.
Let me ask for a second.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we, we go the full amount, we pay for the full amount, $11.93 like we do all the other residences. This has been going on since 1994, I believe, and I think it's time that we, we pick up our, our responsibility and provide for these, they're just different types of residential units. So I make a motion that we adopt the $11.93 per residential condominium unit.
I second that motion.
Any other questions? We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, following up that.
Mr. Hudson, I'm sorry, Mr. Hudson had a comment, I think.
Mr. Hudson, you got a comment?
If you.
I don't want to steal. There's nothing to.
You want him to finish first and then you?
Go ahead.
Finish first, Mr. Hudson, or you?
Commissioners, before, Mr. Hudson says that obviously, as the presentation noted, this is dependent on the renegotiation of the contract with Waste Management.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here today. First of all, I want to thank you on behalf of the Walton County Taxpayers Association as we brought this issue to you about a month ago. At that point in time, y'all asked your special project coordinator, I called him your go-to guy at that point in time, and he has obviously been your go-to guy on this issue because he's come forward with a recommendation for you in a very timely fashion. And I appreciate that tremendously and the work that he's done. We chose at that point in time when you did make the decision that you were going to look at this to contact condominium owners, our membership, as well as the camp managers here within Walton County, asking them to give you an indication of what their wishes were in this regard. Today I have for you a petition. I have one copy, it's 260-something pages in length. I will give your admin a electronic copy before I leave today, but this petition contains the signature of 2056 residents, owners, who are asking you to do what you've done today by your prior vote, and that is to treat those units equally with residential, picking up whatever the cost is. Larry, that was, as a bean counter, I can tell you that was quite a gymnastics issue that you went through, and I appreciate that. But I do appreciate what you've done today. I think it goes a long way towards one, what I'm calling now One Walton, to where we have issues that are equally treated throughout the county. And I appreciate that, and the taxpayers, and those 2056 residents, owners appreciate your action today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, as you come back up, I would ask that you get with Christine Samuelson with our GIS. She gave me some information yesterday to make sure we're not duplicating.
Right.
Apparently there, they have been deep into this for a while, and.
And to Mr. Hudson and some of the others in the Taxpayer Association, I will say I appreciate them allowing you and staff to, the opportunity to work through this process. We've had a number of conversations over the last two or three weeks, and it's, it's much easier, and I think it's collectively, we can get more things done if we will work together. And so I appreciate what they've done in allowing us to move this process forward and bringing you good information to make a decision on. So moving, having made that decision, if you look at the remaining portion there in your packet, starting with number two, we need permission to work with Waste Management to amend the current franchise agreement to reflect the, the initiative that you just adopted. In those blanks you see there, if you'll insert the number $11.93, and what we're going to ask is that Waste Management bill directly to Walton County, $11.93 for each residential condominium unit by residential condominium complex. And in the event that the total cost of those complexes are less than what the $11.93 per unit would generate, we pay the entire bill, but there's no residual due either to condominium unit or to Waste Management. So if you've got a, if you've got a complex that has 100 units, they would bill the county $1,193 for those units. If the total bill for the units are, is $800, they bill the county $800, and the other $393 is not remitted either to Waste Management or the condominium unit. So that would be the second part. Number three, there's some language there from the current franchise agreement for collection and the agreements for disposal. The collection agreement says that our agreement will automatically renew in 2000, expires December 31, 2016. If the county does not notify Waste Management 60, at least 60 days prior to that, that contract will automatically renew. And a similar situation in the disposal agreement, which will end at the same time, but in that agreement says we have to give them one-year notice in order for it not to automatically renew. So part of our recommendation, recommendation today is to put Waste Management on notice on both contracts that the county opts out of those auto renewals, that they're certainly willing to participate in negotiations, but we, we send those letters that exercising our option to keep those contracts from auto renewing. Then we begin negotiations with Waste Management on a, on a broad scale to work to recoup some of the cost of this initiative, to consider the options we have available with a landfill, of opening the landfill and utilizing it to its fullest extent and value, to discuss rates and service levels moving forward. I would suggest we do that over the next six months, and if, at that six-month period we've made significant progress, that staff believes we can come to some renegotiated term that would either get us through the end of the contract or through an extension of the contract, we'll come back with that. Absent being able to reach acceptable terms for a long-term agreement for collection and disposal, we'd come back and, and request that the board allow staff to begin moving forward with a request for proposals for collection and disposal of solid waste.
I will certainly make the motion that we put them on notice to, to redo these contracts.
Okay.
And I also have been asking since before this new board for us to have a meeting on our landfill. We need a workshop. I've been asking for it over and over. We need to know what we can do out there, what we can't do, what are the possibilities? And it seems to always be pushed off, and it's time to, you know, fish or cut bait. We need to have a workshop on our landfill and, and what are our options out there. And then we know whether or not, what we can negotiate on.
I don't disagree. I think, I think now's prime time, Commissioner.
That ain't part of your motion, is it?
Well, that is not part of my motion, but it's certainly, I mean, it's, it's time that we did what we, we should be doing.
Our, my staff's position is the, the landfill is a valuable asset, and we should look at the most effective and efficient way to utilize it as such.
I probably would guess it's probably the most valuable land in all of Northwest Florida at this point.
Could well be.
So my motion is to, to put them on notice to re, to redo the contract.
Second.
That clear, Mr. Jones?
Well, there are, there's three requests, item two, item three, and item four. If those, do you encompass all of those in your motion?
Yes, I encompassed them all.
Thank you.
You second, Commissioner Meadows?
Yes.
You're going to second on that, two, three?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Jones?
In regards to what Commissioner Commander said, do we want to go ahead and broach the subject or set a workshop for the landfill discussion?
I certainly would like to.
Do we need a motion on that, Council?
To set a workshop, yes, for you. We need a motion.
Well, I'll move that we have a, a workshop dealing with the county landfill and our options available there.
And I will second that motion. I'll second it twice if it'll help.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We'll find a date and get that back to you.
Mr. Hoffman, you have the tallies on the.
I do, Mr. Chairman. The number-one ranked firm was Genesis, number-two, Preble Ridge, number-three, HDR.
Thank you.
What's next? What's next? Oh, here it is.
Need a motion to begin negotiations with Genesis?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, the next item was an add-on to Public Works. Mr. Jason Coon, who is with the Juvenile Justice here in Walton County, has requested the county's assistance to haul three loads of donated mill mat that was donated by APAC. They're going to use that on their facility on Highway 90 to build some trails for the juveniles there, and they would just ask that we help them to move that material to that site. And Public Works says they can work that into their schedule.
Is that NAFI?
Excuse me?
Is that NAFI, or where are you talking about? Where is it?
Out there on Highway 90.
In Hurley Park? Okay.
Yeah, that's NAFI.
That's NAFI, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, my only question, and, and I know they're a fine organization, but if we start, you know, they're, again, if we open the door, can we close the door, you know?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree because, you know, it, I mean, where do we stop, where do we stop? You know, with what organization do we stop? And, I mean, I'm all for helping people, but it is a, it is a county, and it is a taxpayer-based revenue, so.
Aren't they a par, for-profit?
They're a state organization, I think.
Just for clarification, I don't believe NAFI runs it. I, I may be wrong, but I think NAFI's been out of there for a pretty long.
Is it DJJ?
I think it's just DJJ.
It's a state.
It's a state agency.
State can't haul it themselves, I guess.
Yeah, tell them to take it out of our pension increases and be glad, be glad to trade them for some.
We'll trade them, yeah.
What do you want to trade?
Well, you know, the state raised our pension account, so.
Out of that, yeah.
They also raised our cost of Juvenile Justice.
Exactly, so I think they can haul their, haul their stuff around.
We'll call them later, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the next item is a discussion on County Road 38 and the, the blowout that we have in the road there. If, if, I think Mr. Cliff Nowitzki is here, he's done some work on that, as well as Mr. Stafford could give a quick update on that and some options for the board as to whether we go in there and do a, a repair, repair those culverts the way they were before, or if we do more of a permanent fix and try to move forward this time with a bridge.
Commissioners, we do have an option. We could actually get in quotes to get a diver. There's actually one whittling that'll go up in that pipe if we want to spend the money. Not got the quote back yet. Yes, sir, I would not do it either. But it's the only way to really know if you can open it up temporary, because you send the camera, you can't tell what the joint is doing from the bottom with the water.
What is your recommendation? What's your recommendation as far as repairing, putting a new bridge in or repairing the bridge, or?
We can repair the path as far as what's there now, Commissioner.
You mean prepare the, repair the road, is that what you're talking about?
We can, but I couldn't do it without getting some kind of inspection on the pipes that's there now. Yes, ma'am, but it'd be too dangerous.
Yeah, would you recommend we try to patch it up, or that we, we put a bridge span in?
After, after an inspection, if the inspections shows good that we can patch it, yes, ma'am, I'd patch it, then I'd move forward with a bridge.
Yeah. Then you do what?
I would move, move forward, trying to get a bridge.
With the bridge, patch it, but then move forward with the bridge? Okay.
We've got a lot of places on 38 that's patched that's sooner or later got to be addressed.
Yeah. What kind of liability do we have with a diver going in that pipe and it collapsing on him?
Whatever, whatever, whoever we hire to do that, we will have extoltoy language.
Holy moly.
I suggest we get somebody really tiny.
Really small. Yeah.
Yeah, looks now, I mean, we, we know there's damage. The north side is completely caved in. We filled it back full of oyster holes. They haven't, but one pipe worked. If you do, it would probably be wise not to waste the money on a temporary, and let's go ahead and pursue a bridge.
How, but that's going to take how long? I mean, I, I think right in there, I was down there, that there's no houses, there's no, so they can use, so how long can we keep that closed? To, because what, it's going to take us six months to, oh, we've got to go through the bid process and the draft of the design and all that? Six months or more to, to repair that?
There's, there's really no reason that people, I mean, you can go around, there's alternate routes, so there's no houses in between there, so you can get in and out. I have had requests to open up the bike path bridge, so maybe we could do that, but, but as far as cars and things, if we put more detour signs out, I think that people will, because I, I think to fix it is really the issue, because we don't want it to cave in again.
I think we need to pursue the bridge.
If we're going for a, if we're going to a bridge, wouldn't need nobody to go in the pipe at all. We could just go ahead and start. I mean, this.
Pursue the bridge, we will not even look at it as open temporary if you'd rather not spend the money.
Yeah, where would the, where would the funds come from? Where would we be funding from?
They would probably have to come out of reserves.
Okay.
What, what would it be, about $500,000, you think?
Man, five to 550,000.
Could, could Public Works do it? Could that?
Yes, ma'am, we could do it.
And we could do it in-house?
We could do it for probably half that.
Probably half that, so that's.
But, but it makes, it makes sense why spend the money on temporary repairing it when we know we've got to do the bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, keep it closed, and let's get the bridge started. I mean, that's, that's not only logical, but it's, it's physically responsible.
Yeah.
Just to clarify on the reserves, I'm not sure that the Public Works reserves would be adequate to do it, but I think that you've got still money left in the landfill reserves, which is for capital projects in this emergency situation. I would think that if we go, if we go forward, that we would use the landfill reserves to fund it.
Let's, let's move forward with it. Which, Commissioner Meadows of District, I mean.
Do we need a motion?
Well, I got a, I got a question, if I can. Wilmer, Billy's sitting there, too. If we started today with authorization to move forward for us to build the bridge, can we have it in place and open prior to the spring break?
March 1st.
Could you get it done that quick? Considering permitting?
We're going to have to move into a permitting process. Cliff may have already made some inroads on that. We made some calls this morning. Water Management District agreed to facilitate and expedite the permit process. The Corps, I don't know, that's, that's a whole different animal. At least six months, I imagine, unless they agree for some reason to, it's probably longer than that.
Six months to get a permit?
At least.
And we get some, somebody to kind of push them along? That's the Corps, so that would be Jeff Miller or Steve Sutherland, or?
We, we can certainly have, you know, attempt to, to talk with them about it and see if they'll agree to move it a little bit faster, but.
Let's try to get, let's try to get it moved along with, maybe the chairman or vice chair could contact Jeff Miller or Congressman Sutherland and.
Okay.
Also, keep in mind, if we do.
We'll drop the letter for that.
Yeah, we can drop the letter.
Also, Commissioners, Mr. Nowitzki has already done a, a significant amount of work on this. He is one of our three firms. Preble Ridge is one of the three firms that you had selected to do engineering work for the county. It would be expedient for him to continue on this process. We haven't awarded any of those three firms yet, any of the contracts, so he would be the first one.
Yeah, I agree, because they, you know, he's been, he, I think they, they have all the information in-house already, so I think that's a, a good recommendation.
Is that your motion?
We need, we need a motion, too.
Okay, I, I would move that we would, we move forward with a bridge and that we go ahead and assign this one to Preble Ridge as, as one of our continuing consultants.
I'll make the second on that one.
Any other questions? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Billy, did you have something you wanted to add? I was just going to point out again, this, this has been submitted along with the other coastal den lakes for a NIFW, NERTA project to replace those. I don't know if there's any, you know, how fast that process will, you know, if we'll ever hear anything.
We can't wait on that. That could be, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Five, 10 years down the road.
But it, but it could be, it could, we could use it for some of the other ones, though, that are evidently in the same condition. Okay.
So, Commissioner, would you want, you still want us to open the path back up?
What do y'all think? The, the, if it's safe, if it's.
Yes, ma'am, we can make the path safe, and I'd rather put them on that and get it, because a lot of them still crossing that road.
Okay, yeah, make that.
Well, maybe you ought to put some more dirt like we did during Opel and just took, closed the whole right of way down where they can't drive around it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, yeah, the bike path. Also, too, could y'all put some signs up, like, I guess what people are doing is they're seeing this blinking sign, and they're going all the way down to the end, and then, you know, they're backing up in people's driveways and such. So I guess if we could put some signs out, detour this way, detour that way, something that gets people to know that Little Red Fish, there's no through fare there.
Them should already be it, but I would check to make sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
That's not only fish in the road. I want to personally thank this committee for what you did for the garbage today, for all the condominiums. I think Walton County has taken a tremendous step forward. I want to personally thank Larry Jones, he came to Edgewater three times. He went through everything to do with my garbage and my employees, and what it takes for a condominium to save waste management money, three different times. I want to thank Kenneth Pridgen, you spent two hours at my project. You went through everything to do with Edgewater, you looked at our compactor, how the lake next door from the floods is about to undermine it. We're having to build $100,000 seawall just to keep the compactor, to make it easier on waste management. Bill Chapman, you were at Edgewater when the guy almost jumped off the roof when he was a freshman in med school. You saved his life. He is now a practicing surgeon at Johns Hopkins University. So you've known Edgewater for a long time. And Cindy, thank you for caring enough to find out about Edgewater's garbage, how much it cost me per employee. If anybody had cared enough to come years ago in the volleyball lawsuit, just looked at the volleyball net, it'd probably save the county a fortune. If we can all work together and come and look, and not just sit up here and be in the north of the county, and make decisions that you never even have seen or looked at or understand, just because that's the way. And Bill Enfield, you were able to come to me and ask for money for donations, and Edgewater gave it to you, but you never cared enough to even come look at my garbage. And $6 and something cents is an insult to the condominiums.
Thank you.
I didn't know we had a hero or a medal winner. Did you get a medal for doing that, Bill?
You get a medal.
Well, I'm not going to take full credit for that. It was me and Deputy McIntyre and two or three others who were there on the 11th, 12th floor, whatever it was, we snatched them off of it. But that was a long time ago.
When you're a lot younger, is what you're saying?
I was a lot younger, yes.
Commissioners, the next item is the county administrative selection process, passing out a score sheet for your use. You've all seen this before, it's the same one we used for the TDC selection, and we also had it in your packet ahead of time. If you could fill that out, ranking or ordering the four candidates that you interviewed yesterday, pass it on to the clerk of court, and he will tally those up and report back to the board. Mr. Chairman, while he's tallying those up, if you want to move on to the TDC, this next item on the agenda, Mr. Bagby.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first item that we bring before you today is a request to amend the scope of services on the beach safety program with the South Walton Fire District. There's two changes to the scope of services. First, we updated the tower locations, and then the second change was allow the South Walton Fire District beach officer to close the water. Currently, under the emergency management plan, the matrix has three entities that vote, for lack of a better term, to close the water. That would be the sheriff or his designated representative, the South Walton Fire District chief or his designated representative, and the tourist development council executive director or my designated representative. What I told the chief was I will give my proxy to Gary Wise, and we will bring back at a later time, in conjunction with the sheriff's office and the South Walton Fire District, an updated matrix for the emergency management plan. The TDC has a responsibility to the bed tax collectors and the tourism industry to notify them when the water's closed, but I'm not comfortable thinking that any of us have the ability or the qualifications to make that determination. And every operations center I've ever been in, the person on the ground made the decision, and then if you had to double-check it, or you had to second-guess it, you did that at a later date. But the decision to close the water ought to be by the folks down on the water. So we'd ask you to approve those changes in the scope, and if you do that, then we ask you to do a separate motion to approve renewing the contract.
Mr. Bagby, I have a question now. I've never seen an AG opinion concerning the use of the fire department to pay for the lifeguards down there. I've heard there is one, I'm just asking, have we got it? If we have, I'd like to see it. If not, I believe we need to move forward to find out if it's where it's supposed to be.
Commissioner, I'll defer to the two attorneys, but I believe we sent you an email that said there wasn't, was never an AG opinion. That was actually issued on the fire district, but the two attorneys did get together and discuss that issue, and I'll let Clay come up, or I'll let Mark go ahead and address that.
Go ahead, Clay, and start.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, sir, Commissioner Chapman, what Mr. Bagby's told you is correct. At no point in time has Walton County ever pursued an attorney's general opinion, nor has received one, on the use of TDC funding for the lifeguards. We have looked at this issue. Mr. Davis has spoke to Mr. Alford, who's obviously doing overview of the TDC's issues. What we've looked at is, though, under the current statute, we believe it is a permissible expenditure of the money, because we do have a beach safety program. When this was enacted originally, the intent was that we were going to promote beach safety to tourists. As I know some of the board members will remember, and probably all of you are at least somewhat familiar, when we looked at the bike path issue, the standard for funding that was, is it an activity, service, venue, or event that attracts tourists? And the standard for that is, do you promote it to tourists? This would be a service that is promoted to our tourists. What Mr. Davis and I are working on is, we're working on a resolution to present to you that the board can adopt memorializing those findings to secure any issues. One of the big issues that your neighboring county, and I certainly don't want to get off in the weeds, so to speak, with what happened in a different circumstance, but one of their issues was, a lot of their choices and expenditures were never formally documented in a way that somebody could look back and say, well, what did the BCC do about this? Was there a legislative finding? Is there some written statement of why the TDC is paying for this, or are they just paying for it and no one knows why? So that's what we're working on to bring to you. What we hope to do is bring that to you along with the appropriate documentation that will complete the issue with the bike paths and maintenance of that. And it is my understanding, I don't want to step on Mr. Alford's toes by any means or Mr. Davis's, but it is my understanding that the clerk has likewise concurred that that would be an appropriate step that would secure the board's prior action, as well as future expenditures on this issue. That's my legal opinion as well. It's Mr. Davis's, from what I understand, but I'll defer to Mark at this time.
And Clay's correct. Just so we're clear, the latest round of court cases essentially come down to, as long as it is found by you guys, the Board of County Commissioners, to be tourist-related, then if we have a resolution or some documentation that says that you guys find that, then the expenditure is okay. And that's, Mr. Alford and I have talked at some length about that. We're going through the language of the resolution to make sure it meets those court cases, and we'll should have it to you the next meeting, I would assume.
That would be my intent.
Let me throw this out to the council here.
Now, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's got to be reasonably related to tourist services. I mean, you can't buy, build a tower somewhere in North Walton County and call it related.
I understand that, but if you're taking and making that legislative finding, if you will, that you're recognizing that, then why cannot we, why can it not expand a little bit further to include the sheriff's office? They have to supplement and augment the amount of covers down there during, from spring break through the summer, because TDC is advertising to bring folks down there. So I know you ain't supposed to augment a sheriff's or a sheriff fire EMS, but the thing is, it's because of the great efforts of the TDC, and they're bringing thousands and up to millions of people over a course of a year, down here, we ought to be able to make the same type of finding. Because of that, it's increased his, a need for his response here.
Yeah, I'll be glad to address that, Commissioner. That is something we've looked into. In fact, that's been an issue that goes back probably to February of this year, if not slightly before. I know Commissioner Meadows was one of the first commissioners to address this issue. Our neighboring county, Bay County, has undertaken the process of funding additional law enforcement services. There is some discrepancy based on some old AG opinions that address funding of general required services, for instance, law enforcement specifically, which are a general duty owed to all. Bay County took the exact same reasoning that we just discussed, based off of their promotional set of data to do that. I believe Mr. Bagby's spoken with Dan Rowe, the executive director over there. I've spoken to the attorney for the TDC over there and discussed what process they went through. That's certainly something that is, if the board, let me say this, if the board wants to make that determination, that we need to expand our beach safety program, the TDC's marketing effort should include marketing beach safety in a way that would include our provision of law enforcement services as a service to the public, it is something that could be done, and we'll be glad to get you the information on what that would look like, as well as what was done in Bay County. I would simply suggest that, to say that it is the exact same thing as the lifeguards, considering we have an established beach safety program that we've marketed for the better part of seven or eight years, I'd probably defer to the chairman, I believe he was here when that first went into effect.
It gets longer than that, yeah.
And it may be longer than that. I know we had the.
Let me ask you a question. Panama City, Bay County, my understanding was that they paid for additional officers only during spring break, because they advertise for spring break. We do not advertise for spring break. That was what, we went through this whole thing, that, you know, that TDCs could not pay for police, unless it was specifically tied to something that you advertise, and it's, it was for spring break that time, so.
That is correct, Commissioner. I'll note one other thing, when they did their legislative findings, the attorneys for the TDC over there, and I'll discuss it, one of the things they added in was some set of provisions and findings that were supported by some of their research data, that would allow auxiliary officers to be brought in at other special events or large areas where it was promoted. For instance, a family-friendly weekend that's being geared to bring your families here, bring your kids here, we're a safe environment. I'd also note, one of the big differences in Bay County and Walton County is that their marketing efforts, as Mr. Bagby, I'm certain, can talk to much more clearly than I, have really geared on trying to move what their image was in the spring break heyday of the mid to late 90s, to what it is today, and as far as promoting that to the families that we've had here for quite a while. So that is one of the differences that we would have to readjust our marketing efforts.
Let me stop, because this is, this is a closer question in my mind, I think in Clay's mind as well. We would have to, A, document the marketing efforts, B, have some empirical data that the marketing efforts lead to more people who are seeking, who are relying on extra law enforcement, and that the extra law enforcement can't be funded otherwise. I think there's a little bit of a different standard when we're talking a service, a generally provided service throughout the county that would be funded by TDC, if that makes sense. So although I feel very confident and we're prepared to go forward with the lifeguards and the other things we've talked about in our resolution, this one's going to take, if the commission chooses to go down that path, this one's going to take a little more documentation and time than the other matters that we are going to.
I'd like for us to at least take a look at, I mean, the sheriff's department has to buy, you know, beach vehicles, you know, that can go through the sand and all that sort of thing, and they're there during the time when we advertise from May to September to bring families in. And certainly, it is an advantage to our tourists to have a sheriff's department on that beach protecting those people. And to me, it may take some numbers, but to me, it's clear.
We just have to be able to document, tie it to the marketing, and tie it to an increased need in that particular area as related to the marketing.
I think there's the man, right there.
And part.
I think they already have, they already have four.
Yeah, because part of the problem, I mean, we'll look into it, but to kind of reinforce what the attorneys have told you is, remember, we didn't hire the fire department, okay? You competed out for lifeguards. You had a process where you brought in and did a competitive bid, and the winner of that bid just happened to be the South Walton Fire District, okay? We don't fund, I'm sure the fire department will come up and say, well, we have a lot of increased calls, and EMS has a lot of increased calls during spring break or during the summer, and so then, and that's the slope that the lawyers are trying to keep everybody off of. And so we can look at the numbers, I don't have a problem, and whatever guidance I get from the two attorneys and the board, I don't have a problem following. But you have, when you worst-case this, it's, then the TDC becomes the capital construction project company and the de facto funding source for everything that happens on the south end of the county, just because tourists come to the south end of the county. And that's what the law does not allow, so we'll do our due diligence. Thank you.
And Major Joe Preston, for the record, from the sheriff's office. Just to make a clear delineation, I think, on what Commissioner Chapman was saying is, sometimes when we think of the sheriff's office, we think law enforcement only. In those times that the fire department does not have lifeguards on the beach, we do participate and perform a life-preserving and life-saving function. We have longboards, we have our folks that are trained by the fire department personnel, so understand, we're not talking about supplementing law enforcement services, but those life-saving services that we do supplement in this arena as well. So there's a clear distinction on that.
Have we made a motion yet?
We need a motion, too.
No, but I would like to, I would like to make a motion that we amend the scope of services for the beach safety services. That's my first motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next one is to approve the.
Yes.
Question on that. There is a current resolution in place that includes emergency management as part of that. Will that affect, will this amendment affect that resolution that already exists?
No, we're going, as I stated earlier, we're going to bring an amendment back to that resolution.
Okay.
That changes, that gives basically the fire department the ability to make that decision.
And I think the second motion needed to be a lifeguard services approval agreement.
That's correct. Now that you've changed, approved the change of scope, then the contract automatically renews, but we're, since we changed the scope, we'd ask that you approve the one-year extension.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I'm going to have John come up to do the public relations agency and a couple tasks.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Clerk, John Irvin of the TDC have three items for you. First one is regarding the public relations agency. Curly and Penn, our current agency, has gone through two renewals, which was the allowable amount, so as you may recall, we went out for RFP through the county finance process. We had seven submitters. That was scored down to three finalists, who were asked to come and present to panel evaluators. Curly, Penn, and Spring O'Brien accepted that invitation. Spring O'Brien was the top evaluated firm. That was shared with the TDC Advisory Council, and they unanimously recommended to approve entering into contract with that top evaluated firm, Spring O'Brien, so we bring that before you today.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for that. The next one actually wouldn't need to come before you, because it is a fairly modest financial effort, but we certainly treat it with great importance. The beach access signage and awareness of beach safety is certainly a big deal. We went through in 2013 workshops with the community regarding signage. We have had a family of signs that's sort of expanded without a lot of continuity. We were looking for a way to reinforce the message, because if you only provide it once, you can't expect, you know, good adoption. We did not want to change the horizon with new, more signs, so what you have before you is a proposal of doing some deck graphics. They are OSHA-approved appliques that would go on our treks, which is that non-wood material at the. appliques that would go on our treks, which is that non-wood material at the regional walkovers, which is 12. We would suggest just doing the 12 as a beta test. Again, shared this opportunity with the TDC Advisory Council and a unanimous recommendation to try this beta test. It's all told, the cost would be, you know, under $1,500 to do our regional accesses. And we selected the top seven messages to reinforce. It's mildly interruptive marketing so that beachgoers do come in contact directly with these important points. So we would share that with you today.
John, I know you gave us an example of each one of the...
Yes.
...particular ones. Would each one of these access points have multiples?
A set of seven. And then we would, after going through the initial deployment, we'd end up with an SOP of exactly how they're placed, in what order. This is not about advertising or selling product. This is simply safety message and compliance message.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll give you an update once those are out in the real world. And the last one I have is for our ad agency of record. We've completed our first term with Zender Communications. They've done an outstanding job. We asked the TDC Advisory Council's opinion on whether or not we could exercise one year of that contract. It was unanimously recommended to the Board of County Commissioners that we would continue with Zender Communications and for another year.
Yeah. And if you, if you go through the Nashville airport anytime within the next...
A month.
Month, all you're gonna see is visit South Walton.
Wow.
It's, they call it taking over the airport. They've taken over everything, even the luggage.
Dozens of applications in Nashville, Baltimore, in Midway, in Chicago. There's an awful lot of really good stuff being done that increases the value of our product, not just the attendance. We're always about value. So I'm proud to stand and ask for consideration for one more additional year for Zender Communications.
It was, it was very impressive. So I move that we extend their contract.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve.
Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda for the TDC Commissioners is to request to approve the establishment of four TDC committees. They're listed there. Just to give you a sense of the interest and excitement, we've put this message out two weeks ago. We've already had 98 hits on our website on this link, and we've had 20 applications, hard copy applications submitted for the 36 seats that will be on these four committees. So there's a lot of interest in the county to help move the product forward, the brand forward, and we're very excited about that. We just ask that you approve that. And then...
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then the last thing is, just want to give you a heads up. We've received email traffic from Southwest Airlines that basically they're going to back out of the agreement for the half-cent expenditure co-op program, advertising program that we entered in with them. Just to remind you that, half-cent was for, either to attract a low-cost carrier or to market in emerging markets. And so, some of the wraps that we're using this year at the airports that John mentioned, Commissioner Meadows mentioned, is coming out of that half-cent bed tax. We will bring back to you in October after we've taken it to the TDC and ask for their guidance on whether to recommend termination of that half-cent at the, when it sunsets at the end of, end of September next year, or to refocus it only on emerging markets or what to do with it. But we should be getting a formal letter from Southwest Airlines in the next 10 days. And once we get your decision in October, we'll reply accordingly. Subjecting questions, that's all we have.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Dofford?
Mr. Chairman, the top-rated candidate was Mr. Jones. The second was Mr. Brown. The third was Mr. Gomian. The fourth was Mr. Reuben.
Need a motion to... Need a motion to... Top candidate?
To accept.
Yep, accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman...
Congratulations, Mr. Jones.
Would you like to have Mr. Davis begin negotiations for his agreement, or how would you like to handle that?
I think we, whatever the board would like to do with it, we're gonna go out, I'm aware they need to look at Mr. Bagby's contract or what, but I would like Mr. Jones to be able to start tomorrow morning, or this afternoon, or whenever. We need, we need to get, he's already with the county. Just move him to that position, they start running, taking care of business. Is that all right with the board?
Can you start tomorrow, Larry? That's the right answer.
Is that good with the board, or?
Difficulty we might have is the payroll issue, but we can go back and readjust that.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have three items. The first is, you asked me to prepare a professional services agreement between the county and my firm for you to procure my services or my firm's services as the county attorney. It's essentially the same contract I have as interim county attorney, except the monthly retainer does have a cap on it. And only way I could exceed the cap is to get your prior permission. I really don't believe that would ever happen, but I wanted that in there just in case something came up and I had to spend more time than I anticipate. Everything else is essentially the same. There is a provision where I supervise the county legal staff. I'm leaving that in there for now with your permission. That might cause some headache with our Florida retirement system. I'm not, by the way, participating in the Florida retirement system with this contract. It's an independent contract. I have two opinions from FRS right now, whether it matters or not. And frankly, as long as I am, just to be blunt, a school board employee and they're paying on the school board side for my, on the FRS, it should not be an issue. But if it is, I'll come back with an amendment. But I do not anticipate that being an issue.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have is the item we had last, two weeks ago regarding the lease with Regional Utilities. You asked me a couple of questions, one of which was, do we have other folks in the building? And indeed, we do. We do not have subleases with those folks, but we are in the process of contacting them and drafting some sort of sublease with them. We need that, not for money necessarily, but for liability issues and, and those types of issues. I also spoke with Melissa Pilcher, and I believe Didi also spoke with Melissa Pilcher. They are not, at this point, seeking a swap of in-kind services. It would be a straight rental of, of $2,000 a month for the entire building. And that includes the apartment upstairs and the entire building itself.
So we have an open apartment.
What about the maintenance costs?
We have modified this one from the last one that would basically say, we are responsible for the essentially day-to-day maintenance. Anything caused by an act of God, a hurricane, a storm, that causes those types of damages, flooding, then Regional Utilities would be in charge, would be responsible for that.
Do you know the reason for eliminating the in-kind services?
No, sir, I do not. Did she think that you...
Any idea?
No, no. They just kind of showed up in my office one day and said, we want you to pay us now.
It is still in the contract. If we can negotiate some in-kind services for the swap, it's still in the contract, but at this point they would be seeking...
I figured they needed the money.
Yeah. We have to borrow from them.
That's just a rent for the apartment up there.
I'm saying, can't we rent, can't we rent that apartment out?
We can. Whatever we want to charge, it's, I think it's a one-bedroom apartment, one-bedroom, one-bath. It doesn't have any furniture in it, but, and it has its own entrance.
The lease does allow for us to sublease.
Yeah. And we have a couple other office spaces in there that we could actually sublease out. I don't, you know, if, if we so choose. So we could actually probably end up, you know, with, with no rental income coming from the county if we got those other folks to pay a little bit, rented out the two-bedroom apartment, I mean, the one-bedroom apartment.
Motion to approve the contract. And to see if we can rent out the upstairs.
Second, yeah. Second. I mean, I guess, do we, can we advertise in the public for that?
Sure.
Can we advertise?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be in the landlord business.
We have a, we have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
The last item I have, Commissioners, is another ship mortgage. This is a short-sale situation. Commissioner Infeld has asked me to come up with a policy, and every time I draft it, I come across a different situation where a ship mortgage comes into play. I'm also looking through the federal statutes and the, and the code of federal regulations dealing with ship mortgages. One of the things I discovered, and frankly did not know, is if the ship mortgage is in place with the same person who actually took it out for 10 consecutive years, the mortgage goes away anyway by operation of its terms. This is a short-sale situation. The value of the home, according to the appraisal we received, is $175,000. The sale price is $174,900. We're going to receive, and I'm rounding here, $6,500 and some change, and we would be forgiving the difference, essentially.
Kim, could Kim Winterberg come up and kind of explain, because I got a letter, I don't know if the rest of you did, I got a letter, I think, from this gentleman, and I'm kind of a little confused.
Ms. Winterberg is the sales agent.
Yes, Ms. Winterberg, yeah. Kim Winterberg.
Kim Winterberg, Broker Associate with Selling Dreams Realty, representing the seller in the sale. We, what, what questions do you have?
Well, I think, from the way I read the letter, did anybody else get it? Or is it just, okay. Does he want us to forgive the $6,000? Is that...
It's actually asking to forgive approximately $3,600. $6,200 and change, or, excuse me, $3,800. $6,200 and change would actually be paid back to the ship program. And as Mr. Davis said, normally that's forgiven after a 10-year period anyway. It is an interest-free loan that's considered a second. The first mortgage is actually a direct USDA loan. And the second is where the shortfall comes in. So of the $10,000, approximately $6,200 and change would be paid back towards ship.
And this is a short sale where the lender is, the first mortgage holder is agreeing to accept less than what's owed on their mortgage as well.
Correct.
Shouldn't the county get the whole $10,000 back?
Well, there wouldn't be, under this particular short sale, again, the lender, the first lender is agreeing to accept less as well. There probably would not be enough funds lent to satisfy...
Oh, so we're gonna waive the, why don't we, I'd rather not waive anything. These are just coming over and over and over again. I think we ought to at least split it with ship.
Well, we would be receiving, of the $10,000 we loan, we would be receiving under this proposal $6,200.
Yeah.
Or ship would be receiving.
We would, okay, ship would be received. Okay, I got it.
Yeah, because from that letter, I don't see there's any way where this gentleman can come up with the money. So, I mean, you know, I'll make the motion to accept the proposal. Is that what, yeah. I'll make the motion to accept the proposal. Don't like it, but I don't...
Motion, her second.
I'll second it with a comment, please.
Yeah. Don't like it.
Commissioner Meadows, you're right. We see a lot of these coming in here. And what I think is happening is that wherever this negotiation starts with the sale, people that make the deal go through, they get their $10,000, they walk away from it.
Yeah.
And then, knowing full well, probably at some times, those people can't even qualify for what it was, the way they were doing it back years ago. And that's why we went and tanked. So I'm second this motion, but I just wanted on the record, it's, it doesn't look right and it smells.
One of the things I'm looking at in terms of policy is, if the ship money was paid to a, to a owner who then, the ship money was essentially used as a down payment, the owner received whatever amount, the $10,000. And then that person ends up either, usually ends up foreclosing. The person holding the first mortgage was the owner, sold it, it was a purchase-money mortgage. I have some, that's not the situation here, by the way, but I, one of, one of the things I'm going to be bringing to you guys is, I have concern about that person taking the $10,000 and then coming back and asking, when they sell the property after a foreclosure, or part of a foreclosure, receiving forgiveness or part of forgiveness of the ship mortgage. So that's, that's something we're going to consider. But again, that's not this situation.
Well, I know it's not actually county dollars, but it's everybody out there pays federal tax dollars. That's right.
Yeah, you know, and, and I guess, if we want to blame somebody, we can blame the federal government. I mean, there was a period of time in there where they were making loans to anybody that could walk through the door. And a lot of these, you know, knowing that they couldn't pay the bill eventually. But in this case, I saw such a hardship there and just say, well, at least we're getting some back rather than nothing at all, yeah.
Well, and if it does make you feel any better, and this is just a generality, but in my 15 years of experience in the last six or seven of lots of short sales, second mortgages, as a general rule, are getting paid back at a rate of approximately 10% to 15%. So we're at 60%, which I think is a real good thing for the taxpayers.
Yeah, look, yes, sir.
My comment was a concern that, in this letter that some of us received, the gentleman that's asking for this forgiveness is, he lost his temper and as a result, he took his wife's credit cards and this spiraled into this situation like this. And my concern is that he acknowledges it's his actions that caused this, and yet he's looking to us to bail him out.
Well, he, he also had a three-year-old with leukemia. That the medical bills mounted and caused family problems. So, and I do, I appreciate what you're saying, but there were some other extenuating circumstances that I'm not sure he explained very well in his letter.
I think the program needs to be looked at. I think we ought to, I think we ought to go up to the top and look at the program with, with our congressmen and our senators because it's, it's, it appears to be just, you know, it's setting us up for losses, just...
The fact that it's a second mortgage makes it extremely...
Yeah, yeah. We're never gonna...
Never gonna, yeah.
I think we, it's one of the things we need to talk to our federal representatives about. It's just crazy.
Call the question. I believe I made the motion.
Yeah. We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's all I have. And thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Meadows?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I think I just had one thing. I just, I wanted to talk about the pump, the pumps, the pumps that pump out the floodwater. Evidently, we have...
Did we skip a bunch?
Yeah, we're gonna come back to it. I just, we just caught it.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to bring up the, the issue of the pumps, the pumps that pump, you know, water. Evidently, the county has one of them, but it's, it's broken. And so we borrow one, I think, from Regional. And then a lot of people have told me that they rent pumps, but they're very expensive to rent as well. A lot of private owners rent pumps. So my, my question is, shouldn't the county have a couple of pumps that we own that are in working condition at all times, so that when we get in these situations, that we don't have to wait for Regional to approve, or we don't have, you know, we don't have to depend on anybody else? Or get the one that we have, get it fixed? There's somebody in the back waving their hand. I'm not quite sure who it is, but I don't know if that's a comment or something. Anyway, that's my question is...
We did get our, the one pump is fixed now. We've got it back going.
Okay.
Is that all we got?
We have one pump.
One pump in the whole county.
Yeah.
Yes, we got but one pump. You gotta have a crane or an excavator when you take it out to set it up. It's a brand-new pump, got three hours on it. It was, got back when it was pumping the lakes. But it's just no use for us unless you pump in a lake.
Would it be cheaper to rent pumps, or would it be better to buy? And maybe you don't have the answer to that question right now, but I just, I wanted to bring it up because I felt like it was something that we needed to have on hand.
Stephord, wasn't that pump purchased as part of the response to the oil spill?
It was, yes, sir.
Because it was concerned that there was going to get oil residue into the Coastal Dune Lakes.
Right, yes, sir. Its hydrolics is actually some kind of cooking oil that it runs off of.
Am I, am I correct? We spent $40,000 for that pump?
I think 32, if I'm not mistaken, yes, sir. And the most we can get out of it, if you sell it right now, seven. They won't, they don't want to give you nothing but, because of the way the pump's designed.
Well, shouldn't we just hang on to that one in case we need it for the Coastal Dune Lakes again and buy another one? Shouldn't we get another one?
Well, yeah.
We can't give it away.
Well, yeah.
We can't give it away for $7,000.
Yeah. I'd say we keep that one and get another one.
What would the rental cost be?
In the, I've just got the quotes in before we came over here. And we could actually get set up for around 50 grand. We get the hose to pump, brand-new pump.
Is that purchase? Or is that?
It's actually the.
What's our rental cost?
We can get a, I didn't get no rental prices.
I do know that, yeah. I do know some people rented, rented one. We might be able to get a government price, but I think it's pretty expensive.
Also, while she's coming up, we also have a contract with Crowder Gulf. They can do that type of work as well.
Who?
We have a pump at Edgewater that I got from Thompson Pump. We used it 4th of July when our lower garage is flooding because of the Shipwatch lakes and all coming on to us. For 4th of July, we used it for seven days. The rental cost was $1,700. And it pumps 1,500 gallons a minute out. So it pumps my parking garage when it's above your knee. It pumps it out within an hour. The guy offered to sell Edgewater the pump for $4,000. But Edgewater, and we're pumping, we were pumping last week, we're not now. So it's probably costing me, I've had it 10 days this time instead of seven, so, but it's, but we're putting all the diesel in it and we're managing it. But really and truly, the maintenance on those things, when you buy one for 30-something thousand dollars, and then when you need it, it's not even running. It's kind of like the tractor that would have gotten all the garbage off at Wellstale, that we had the tractor and we had the thing, but of course, it was not running. Y'all don't need to be buying all this expensive equipment if you can't take care of it. It's easier to lease it. When I called Thompson Pump, I called four days before the storm was coming. Thompson Pump told me that I could have that one and that they had every other pump already on standby for other municipalities. I was the only individual that got one. Right now, Shipwatch is running one, trying to get Shipwatch off of the street at 98, where y'all looked at. They're running one that pumps 200 gallons a minute. Mine's 1,500 gallons a minute. It's easier for y'all to make a deal with, with Carl Dean at Thompson Pump, make a deal with him. If he knew you were gonna use it every time, he brings it before the storm, he sets it up, he comes back, he takes it apart, he takes it off with him. All you have to do is have your staff run it, and then they service it.
Thank you.
Could you come back to us with some figures or, because we'll have to do an RFP, I guess, you know, for services, how much would it cost to rent one?
Yeah. How much?
And also, I think you need to look at Crowder Gulf and see what they charged to mobilize and what they would, what they, got some idea of what they could charge if we got a contract with them.
We have a contract with them.
We're getting something like, yes, again, we need to activate them. So a lot of work on our.
Thank you. Yeah. They were moving that one pump around, like, every.
It's a, it's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have public hearings will be the next item. Ms. Quimby from the Finance Department has the first one.
And we'll need to open the public hearing, vote on the item, close the public hearing since we're moving.
Make a motion that we open the public hearing?
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This is a public hearing to bring forward funds in the sidewalk fund for the South Holiday and San Juan roadside walks.
Motion.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in support or opposition? Seeing none? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion to close public hearing. Second.
Second.
Have a motion to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, on the next three, you'll, you'll need to close the public hearing, then vote, because we're not moving money within these.
We're not moving money, okay.
I think it's four of them, actually.
Excuse me, four, I'm sorry.
Can we take them all four at one time, or do we have to do them all individual?
Individual.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this is for Doggett Canal MSBU for the Maintenance Services Annual Rate Resolution. There is a change on this one for this year. It used to be by parcel, and that was changed to be by boat slip because one parcel owner went in there and put several boat slips. So to make it equal for all the people that live there, they now divide it by the number of boat slips.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in support or opposition? Yes, ma'am. Come to the podium.
I just don't understand the wording.
Ma'am, would you state your name for the record, please, ma'am?
Linda Chauvet. I live in Point, Washington, in Doggett. And I just simply don't understand the wording in it, in the proposition. They're saying it's not a tax, yet it is a tax. And I just, it's wonderful. I don't have a boat. The canal's wonderful, but I simply can't, I'd like to try and find out about claiming a hardship or something. I can't, it's been an extra $900 since 2008. And 24/7, I care for my daughter. Mr. Davis might remember me from the school, but my daughter Hannah. And I don't know what avenue to take with this. I truly don't. When I went up to the county, they said no one's ever claimed hardship before. Of course, this is not an easy thing to ask in public.
Commissioners, what I would suggest, I believe the original resolution does have a hardship provision, or Didi and I were talking about it. So what I would suggest is have this isolated contact administration about whether or not there is a hardship provision and how you would go about applying for it.
Just leave me your phone number and contact information, and I'll call you.
Okay. Where would I leave that?
Quick question. Is this for the, just the maintenance of the canals, or was this part of a repayment of a capital loan with a bank?
I don't remember that, Commissioner. I really don't. I think it's, I don't remember.
It's just for the maintenance?
Maintenance, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to speak?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next one is the Imperial Lakes.
We have to approve that one.
Oh, we gotta vote.
Right. Make a motion to approve the Doggett Canal improvements and maintenance.
Second.
Service.
We've got a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next one is Imperial Lakes. Need to open the public hearing.